I need a motion for adoption of the agenda.
I move adoption?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt the agenda. Are there any questions or comments by members of the board? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, agenda is dropped for a o. President's prerogative, which I don't get to do very often, but I am going to have us as the board, we're going to go down in the audience because we have a really special treat tonight. We have the Sherman kids here who did The Lion King and I had the opportunity along with my husband to go and watch them and I thought we were watching a professional show. And I thought, you know, we as a board don't very often get to see the kids. We talk about them, we do things for them, and when they do something extra special, and for those of you that don't know, Sherman Elementary is a STEAM school. And that's science, technology, engineering, art, and math. And this is their art portion of what they do and their curriculum is amazing. So, who is going to get up and speak on behalf of Sherman and get the kids going? All right, and Board, if you would like, we'll go down and sit so we can watch. Otherwise, we're going to have their back to us.
Before you leave the podium, I believe you need to move to, move item 7.1 to out of order from the agenda to before.
Oh, I'm sorry, hang on. Item 7.1. Oh, I do, I'm sorry, I didn't want to sit here. I didn't realize it was on there, thank you. All right, the Chair would move to suspend the rules to move item 7.1 to the top of the agenda.
I move approval.
It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Shannon, my fault, I didn't see it on there. All right, now we can go and watch.
Well, good morning, directors, or afternoon, yeah, afternoon, morning we've been coming up. So, good evening and thank you for having us here. Sherman STEAM, as Director Viall said, is a school who specializes in science, technology, engineering arts, and math. And we're kind of playing with the M, thinking that movement is important, right? And what was the M squared? M cubed? You're the brain trust.
I know, I am.
Okay, anyway, so we're playing with that. We are in a process of becoming. And this year was our first year as an innovative school, so Cabinet and Board, thank you so much for your support in letting us identify ourselves and exploring a dream school. So, couldn't do it without a dream staff, of course. So, we started off STEAM because there was already a huge interest in the, on the staff's part in science. We'd had science fairs for quite a, quite a long time. And then amongst our parent group, we have a lot of artists, parents, and grandparents. So, it was important for us to include the A in STEAM, of course. And our staff is wonderful and innovative and energetic and positive. I love working with them, I feel very fortunate. And some of them are here tonight. For example, our coach Tara Edmund, second grade teacher Anna Rowley, second grade teacher Cara Cato, our lap teacher, Mr. Wise. Mr. Wise. And I think that's it. And then a whole bunch of parents, which is so typical of what happens at Sherman. We just do things together. So, one of our project-based learning, well, project-based learning is the way we move STEAM throughout the curriculum. So, kids will have a driving question. For example, second graders at one point in the year, their driving question was, I want to ride the unicycle better, so how do I, what do I know about balance and motion from our Fosket to help me ride unicycles better? So, they went through a design process to make, some of them, Mrs. Cato, right? They designed training prototypes for riding the unicycle. And then some of the finished products were even using stop-motion animation, which our artist in residence, Therese Cuff, helped us with this year, and you'll be seeing some of her work.
So, it's part of our project-based learning, technology is part of every project that we do, and collaboration is a key piece. Students cannot work independently, they actually are required to work together and get over some obstacles that present themselves just because of that. We invite guest experts in and speakers. This is a picture of an entomologist holding a bug and introducing it to a child. And then we actually have Montana Andrews in the other picture from Sami. She did her senior project with us and collaborated, taught the kids about ferns, brought specimens, and then we had a field trip where she led it with other students from Sami for us. We actually, we, people think of them as field trips traditionally, we're trying to change that a little bit because really the field experiences that we have are connected to those projects. So, it's not done in isolation, but rather as a building on the larger project. This is a picture of our fourth graders visiting an estuary in Good Harbor when they were learning about, their driving question was, salmon are in trouble, what are we going to do? Part of the culminating events for each of the trimesters that we've had the project-based learning have been parent nights where this, children have to not just show like an artifact, but actually teach their parents about what they've learned and other adults that come through, and it's really exciting to see those kids not just sharing work, but giving the parents a quiz on the types of leaves and what does this mean. It's, it's really fun for parents and for the kids. And I, you know, in closing about all the pieces, inventing has been a huge root piece of this that's sort of naturally arisen. The students work together, they come up with ideas, they have to redesign a lot, and it's a lot of work, but they're very happy to do it because they see that end result. They see us supporting them, they know that the school district is behind them, their teachers, the community at large, and we actually are just in the process of opening a Makerspace dedicated area in our building where they're going to be able to take this to a whole new level, so we're very excited about that. All right, so, we have our artist residents here tonight from this year, Therese Cuff. Do you want to stand up and just say hi? So, this is a video she put together that captures the work she did with the kids.
During Sherman's Artist in Residence program, I was able to develop a curriculum that connects the physical, hands-on approach to art-making to digital media. The goal was to have students understand the role that imagery and movement and sound have on the digital media that they're exposed to. We started off using the zoetrope, creating a series of images that create movement. For the stop-motion workshop, we used magnets on puppets that they had made, we used chalk, we used objects from Tinkertopia, and we used clay. As soon as we created a stop motion, we were able to plug it into the smartboard and watch it immediately, and, and they could make that connection and not have to wait. We created time-lapse movies using drawings that they had done where we emphasized contrast and pattern making and textures. We did a printmaking workshop and created a series of prints that became animations that we then added sound to. With the older students, we introduced digital animation using an animation app, pulling from what we learned earlier with the hands-on work to use in the digital format. And then, and then we spent some time exploring sound and movement. We created choreographed stop-action animations, and we also manipulated some of the work that they had done to create more experimental work. Everyone got something out of it with extraordinary results that they can apply to multiple projects and experiences that they have, as well as be more educated in the media that they consume on a daily basis. Overall, I just found it was a really rewarding experience. I got so much out of it creatively, I think the students got a lot out of it creatively, and I also feel like this is something that so many students from, on the elementary level can benefit from.
And Cook has another ad for Therese. She was able to work with all of our kids, kindergarten, fifth grade.
She was able to work, okay, she was able to work with all of the kids, K through five, developmentally appropriate lessons, collaborated well with the other teachers so that she could use similar management styles. And so that let the kids, I'm assuming, you can tell me if I'm wrong, it let the kids really be free to be creative in that space and to take risks and to not just express themselves, but to take the skills that they were learning to express themselves. So, one of our big projects this year was to work in collaboration with Pierce Conservation District and the city to create a rain garden on our campus, so thank you to Buildings and Grounds, I know you're here, that gave us the okay to do that. So, community partnerships were very important for this project, and our first graders kind of took over the rain garden project, right? Yeah, yeah, they did. They became the experts and their driving question was, how do we inform our community about our Sherman? Oh, sorry, I'm taking their words. Okay, they will tell you their driving question, won't they? Yes. So, I give you Tate Edmund and Ellery Dixon.
Hi, my name is Tate and I'm from Mrs. McColl's class at Sherman Elementary.
Hi, my name is Ellery and I'm from Ms. Jenkins' class at Sherman Elementary.
Our driving question was, how can we inform people in, in our community about our rain garden?
These are some things we got to do. We went on a field trip to Point, Deviant's Park, in the Rose Garden, in the native plant garden.
We got to write a lot, a lot in our science journals, I really liked that.
We planted all the plants in the rain garden, it was really fun.
We gave real scientists a tour of our rain garden, and one of them didn't know anything about rain gardens.
We met experts from Sami, two engineers, one entomologist, and a teacher.
We also grew plants in our, in our classroom, and we learned about seeds.
My favorite part was when we planted the rain garden and our brassica plants in our classroom.
My favorite part was everything, I loved it all of them.
We would love to have you come to Sherman and see our rain garden.
Our next presenter is Tajay Story, and he is a fifth grader at Sherman, and he's going to tell you about Mars Rover project that his class worked on this year.
Hello, everybody, my name is Tajay and I'm from Ms. Boy's class in Sherman, and so, in our class, we were, we've been making stuff for our PBL, our PBL, and like a rover to see like kind of stuff on Mars and all that. And mostly our driving, our driving question was, it was, how do humans explore and survive new worlds? Our question for a rover, but it wasn't the task, it was our question was, how was Valles Marinos Canyon formed? And our rover's task was to do, was to collect samples and trying to discover if water caused the erosion of Valles Marinos Canyon, to see if anything could be in it. And so, at the end of that project, when we, when we made, when our class made a rover, we just like learned that it's better to work as a team than yourself, as like just planting stuff by yourself and, and to have a growth mindset by learning new things in your life of rovers or anything, and to never give up to find a new way of a problem that you can never find the answer to.
I'd like to introduce Mrs. Rowley, she's in charge of our music theater program at Sherman.
Hi, so we are in our fourth year of doing musicals at Sherman Elementary. We started off in our first year with 25 kids, and now we have 65 in an optional program, third through fifth grade. This year, we performed The Lion King. It's been a wonderful opportunity for us to be able to partner with people from Fos High School, we're able to use their stage, and for us to be able to partner with people at Tinkertopia who helped us build these beautiful masks in, in the back. I don't know if you noticed, we had giraffes and other masks, and our little baby Simba in the back that were also made from materials from Tinkertopia. That was a wonderful experience. And it gives the kids an opportunity to really explore creativity and collaboration and public speaking and build their confidence, and it's been, it's been awesome, and it's been extremely rewarding. And I know some of these kids are in their last year of doing this show as a fifth grader. Some of them are just starting out as third graders, too. So, they've been excellent and they've been working very hard, and they would like to share with you one of the songs we did from the musical this year, Shadowland. So, ladies, if you would like to come on up.
Okay.
All right, would you like to proceed?
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, 26 years ago last month, a coworker told me she thought I'd gotten a little too chubby and perhaps I should go with her to the local YMCA to work out during our lunch hour. So, I did join the YMCA believing that its purpose was simply to cater to folks that wanted to be more physically fit. What I didn't know then that I personally witnessed over the last two and a half decades is the YMCA's mission-driven dedication to the health, well-being, and education of the children of our community. The YMCA of Pierce and Kitsap Counties has been a longtime partner of Tacoma Public Schools. They provide quality before and after-school programming for students and families. The Y's programming gives many of our students a reason to feel more connected to their school and their education. The YMCA also is a crucial partner when it comes to summer learning loss prevention programs. The Y provides a six-week summer program focused on reading and enrichment for strategic readers entering first, second, and third grade to ensure that we stem that summer learning loss that we've all heard about. This summer will be the third year that the Y has come alongside the TPS Summer Reading Camps. The camps align with learning themes and focus on physical activity, arts integration, character development, and nutrition education. So, one thing that you need to know is that 85% of the participants in the Summer Learning Loss Prevention Program increased their reading skills from beginning, from the beginning of the program. They didn't lose anything. Our principals are some of the Y's biggest cheerleaders. Many of our schools rely on the YMCA partnership for extended learning that the schools cannot provide. Altogether, through all of its various programs and school connections, the YMCA serves more than 10,000 Tacoma youth. Tonight, representing the YMCA of Pierce and Kitsap Counties is Diana Comfort, Executive Director for School-Based Partnerships, and in recognition of the YMCA's investment of time, talent, and resources on behalf of our Tacoma schools' children, families, and staff, and for helping keep me relatively trim, it's my privilege to present the YMCA with the district's Gold Star Community Partner Award as a symbol of our appreciation.
Well, there's a lot more people than me that go into all of that, but since they aren't here and they missed out on the Sherman STEAM program and all those artists and scientists and public speakers, I feel like I can say whatever I want, so. What I, what I know we all want to say is that we're just very grateful and thankful for a school district that understands and values partnership and the outcomes that result for our kids and our families. Like Dan mentioned, and also there's a grade point average increase at the Eagle Center, at First Creek, for participating students from 1.8 to 2.8. And so, in all of our opportunities, at the middle school, at the elementary schools, we are trying to come along with the supportive environment and the engaged staff so that the students can continue to grow and learn and stretch in the out-of-school time hours. Emotionally and socially, yes, we've heard those words, and also cognitively, hoping that we're part of the foundation that they can build on. And there's about 10,000 stories, as we said, but the one that's right at the top of my mind after seeing the elementary school students, as I was walking through Bryant and I was stopped by a teacher who saw the YMCA badge and said, oh, I just want to let you know, I can tell when my student has been to your AM program, there's AM and morning and afternoon program, and I can tell when he's been there because he's more in control of himself. And I said, oh, that's great, who are we talking about? Oh, I know Jared, right, okay, so, this is a young man who's super active and he's full of energy, whatever diagnosis you want to put on it, we know he needs to move a lot, and he, so we play hard in the morning and run, and then we say, what kind of leader are you going to be? And he said, I'm going to be a great leader. What kind of choices are you going to make? I'm going to make great choices, and then he goes off and he makes great choices and is a great leader. So, that's the model, that's what we're hoping to be, which is surrounding and wrapping around the kids with whatever they need, physical activity or nutrition or youth development, and making sure there's a sense of belonging and motivation so that they can go to this, you guys, and be great students. And so, again, this is, we're very, very grateful to have that opportunity, and I, we passed out a one pager, if you have any questions, please feel free to contact any of, any of us, and we'd be glad to answer them. This is wonderful, thank you.
Thank you for what you do for our kids.
Thank you, President Viall and members of the Board. Good deed-doers come in all shapes, sizes, and ages, and from all countries and backgrounds. And certainly, if you have police officers or firefighters training your app to be more observant than the average person. Well, Sem Kosonovsky, a district custodian who works mainly at the Lincoln Stadium and Mount Tahoma Bowls, is just that kind of a person. While in Russia, Sem worked with the Police and Fire Department and served as a navigator, jobs that honed the Police and Fire Department and served as a navigator, jobs that honed his observation skills. That came in handy, because not long ago, Sem was driving in the area of Union Avenue and Highway 16 westbound, when he observed what appeared to be a handgun in the road. He stopped immediately and safely removed what was indeed a handgun, a specialized super-high-velocity weapon that police proved to be stolen from burglary in the city of Kent. It was the kind of handgun that could send bullets through a police officer's vest. Sem turned the handgun over to Tacoma Police and School Resource Officer Joseph Harris at Mount to Homer High School. Harris confirmed that a state patrol pursuit had taken place in that area of a felon, where Sem found the weapon, and the handgun had been thrown from the window of the vehicle. It helped the state patrol solve that crime. By his quick action, Sem assisted in solving a crime and keeping the community safe by removing a dangerous handgun from a public road. Officer Harris couldn't be here tonight, but he sent word that commending Sem's commitment to safety, his courage, his willingness to do the right thing, and said that, that it was really pretty amazing, and he would like to express his sincere appreciation to Sem for his quick response and actions. It's my honor to present to you, Sem Kosonovsky.
Sorry, I'm no good speaking English. Vitaly, my son, Oliver's son, a little bit help for me in the interpreting. If you can, please, because a little bit, this first time for me in situation, sorry.
That's all right.
That he graduate, you that sit there, Seattle, working interpreting, no problem. I think maybe, yeah. Hello, and thank you for this recognition.
Well, I see my dad did his job embarrassing me, so.
I am a little worried and nervous. I want to thank everyone here.
For the opportunity that you guys accepted me and my family.
My post-up.
And my actions.
My post-up, I think I could have done it for each of you sitting here.
And I believe each one of you sitting here could have took the same actions as I did.
I've encountered situations like this.
I did run into previous situations as this before.
When weapons were lost.
When lost, arms were either stolen or lost.
For bad purposes. Afterwards. People.
Those people suffering.
Communities. And it led to bad events. Each one of you could have done the same thing. To take up the item and return it to the necessary place and take the necessary actions. First, we meet the police department.
To turn it into the police department.
For the investigation.
So, the necessary actions can be taken.
And then, they were investigated.
And possible deductions taken as well.
I thank you for everything. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 53, recognition of the 2015 Washington Achievement Award winners, Long and Downing Elementary and Gray Middle School.
Thank you, President Viall and members of the board. The Office of Superintendent of Public Instruction annually honors Washington schools with a Washington Achievement Award for exceptional academic progress, and three Tacoma Public Schools met the award criteria in two of the seven categories. Downing Elementary for high progress, and Long Elementary and Gray Middle School for English language acquisition. The 2015 Washington Achievement Awards use the State Board of Education Revised Achievement Index, and are based on statewide assessment data for the three previous years. Schools must also not be identified for the priority and focus list, and are required to have at least 95% participation on state tests. The High Progress Award means Downing is in the top 10% of schools, making the most progress in the reading or English Language Arts ELA and math combined performance of all students. The English Language Acquisition Award means DeLong and Gray are in the top 5% of schools, based on the Washington English Language Proficiency Assessment, and hit all federal accountability targets. Needless to say, but I'm going to say it anyway, all these awards reflect the high skill level and dedication of the teachers, the support staffs, and the school leadership. In the audience today, showing their support, are the Level Directors, who oversee the work of these schools, Doug Hostetter, Executive Director of Secondary Education, and Elementary Education Directors, Krista Erleyn and Rita Chaudhury. And now, it's my pleasure to introduce the principals from the three schools. Downing Principal Larry West, DeLong Principal Eric Kanishi, and Gray Principal Sean Martin.
And Assistant Principal at DeLong Elementary, Christiana Devonoudi. I think really what this award signifies is that it's a testament to the entire DeLong staff, and it really also characterizes their dedication, hard work, in ensuring that every student, regardless of what language they speak, or where they come from, is provided every opportunity and skills to be a successful learner. And Christiana is going to talk specifically about what strategies we were using last year.
We have to give some credit to a wonderful and now-retired ELL teacher, Christine Donato. She focused primarily on academic language with our students, because we know in their families and in the community, they have many opportunities to speak both their native language and English. But in the classroom, it's really very important that they, they learn to speak and use vocabulary, and learn the definitions of the vocabulary. So, a great focus was on vocabulary use and academic language in everyday life, both with the curriculum that they were using, and in every conversation that she had with her students. Also, in pairing with classroom teachers and all of the specialists in our building, a great focus was to, to work together as a community, to do everything that was necessary for our students, to engage in English on a day-to-day basis, early in the mornings and late in the afternoons, with ELO opportunities. And also, as, as often as she could, pull students and have conversations in the hallway, she would, and make sure that we were all in the building, knowing who those children were, and focusing all of our daily efforts and conversations with them, with their families, and just a wonderful team effort in making sure that these families and their children got the very best that we could offer.
Good evening. So, we're excited to continue celebrating. I think we've been doing that, seems like on a daily basis. We have an extremely dynamic ELL teacher, and she has not only built such strong community within her classes, she has three classes at Gray. She's really built community around the kids at the school, in other classes with other teachers. And that's, for us, that's been key to, to developing that culture at Gray. Part of what Ms. Coulter, and she's, she's our teacher, what she has done that is significant. She started a journey last year with technology in the classroom. And she's integrated, we had a cart of laptops in the room on a regular basis for her, and she's integrated technology into ELL learning that has really changed how kids learn, how kids experience education at, at the school. The immediacy of feedback that they get, the, the levels of differentiation, when it comes to listening, speaking skills, that she can individualize that very quickly with them. How frequently she can assess them and provide that feedback has just been tremendous. So, she's spreading that throughout the building, and this year, we've been fortunate to, to also place tablets in the room to, to support our, our English language learners. So, that's been part of the key. She also collaborates with our, our PLCs and other content areas, and been a champion for, for the kids, and really giving them, the teachers, the information they need to, to support the kids. And so, that's been really important for us, and a huge success for us at Gray. So, definitely proud of her, proud of the staff, proud of the kids and their families, and appreciate the opportunity to celebrate more tonight.
Thank you. Larry?
And at Downing, a lot of the same things you heard from the others, but that acknowledgement of respecting the work that teachers do, and trusting them to do that, providing the guidance and support when they need to. One of the three years that this award was covered, we didn't have a coach, so a lot of everyone pulling together to do that. One of the things I'm most proud, that I really think had a lot to do with the achievement of Downing students, is how the, over the last, this is my fourth year at Downing, so over that time, I can speak of how, how much staff has really come together during that time, that they needed to work more as teams, that wasn't happening before. So, I'm really proud that that happened, and that goes along with acknowledging that the real important stuff, the work that really counts, is what happens between teachers and students in the, in the classroom every day. And the Downing students really, and staff, really stepped up to make that happen. So, we're really proud of, of the achievements and getting this recognition from the state, and appreciate the time here tonight as well.
Thank you. Just so that you know, all of the schools that are honored tonight receive banners, which will be, I'm sure, placed in a highly visible place within their schools. Congratulations, Larry. I got done messing with. You like that? I know. Congratulations. Good job, you guys. Yes, Dr. Garcia.
Just real quickly, before he sneaks out, this is Mr. Larry West's last year, and he's chosen to retire. And I just want to thank him on behalf of the staff for his tremendous service to not only our schools, but to kids that he's served over the years. And so, thank you, Mr. West, for never resting, and always looking and improving, and we wish you all the best.
Thank you. This is my 24th year as either an assistant principal or a principal, and I decided it'd be time to do something else for a while. So, thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Larry, before you go, I want to thank you, because I had the privilege of working with you several times, and I know of your commitment. And I'm particularly pleased that, at this award for Downing, because I'm one of the dinosaurs that went to that school the day that it opened. So, thank you for, for all of your longtime service. Okay, item, item number six, members of the public wishing to address the board. School board members, pardon me, school board members encourage public, encourage public participation. Your input is appreciated. If you would like to address the school board, please follow these steps. Complete a citizen request to speak card, which is located at the back of the auditorium. Submit the card to the school board secretary prior to the start of the meeting. Card submitted after public comment is ended will not be considered at this session. The superintendent will call your name when it is your turn to address the school board. Please speak into the microphone. You will have up to three minutes to share your comments. We have a, a clock over there, and at two minutes, you will hear one ding, and then at three minutes, you will hear another one, indicating that your time to speak is up. And as usual, we try, as this board, and in this, in this room, which we regard as one of the biggest classrooms in the school district, to model appropriate behavior for our kids. So, please, you know, please keep your comments respectful and civil. Thank you. First speaker is Hallie Johnston from Wilson. That's going to be followed by Ann Welton from Helen B. Stafford.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm Hallie Johnston, and I'm the librarian at Wilson High School. And I wanted to thank the school board, and Sean Taylor, Dave Davis, Hannah Benrow, and all the awesome, hard-working librarians that made it possible for this school year to have our wonderful library refresh. We were able to order a whole pile of books for our libraries. It's so exciting that I'm, I'm getting tongue-tied. Just when we heard that we were going to be able to order the extra materials for our libraries, it allowed me right away to engage in new, meaningful dialogues with my staff, and students, and parents. I reached out to parents via the web connect, and emails, and we put, we put posters all over the schools, and got advice on what books they would like to see in the libraries, what topics they would like to have covered. I was able to talk to all the departments in my building, and provide meaningful curriculum support for those departments. And the students were really helpful with the suggestions that they wrote in the notebook on my, on my counter, which I did read reviews before I ordered those books. So, that's really exciting. And I found out that my order shipped today. So, all of those books are coming soon, and it's, even though the books aren't even there yet, it's created such a buzz in the school, that it's just been so exciting. I've also been the happy recipient of my very own cow, which is my laptops on wheels, on a cart. And that has allowed me to always be able to provide technology support and instruction, no matter what else is going on in the building. And we have a lot going on in our building, but I.
You've got one more minute.
Oh, okay, great. So, because I always have access to that technology, it doesn't have to be a big event. The teachers can call up, or email, and "What are you doing right now?" Or, they have their own stuff going on. And the other day, I was teaching students how to log into Office 365, and I, when I got to the part where I told them that they had cloud storage, I heard across the classroom, "Ohhhhh." And I thought, hmm, okay. So, the next class period came along, and I did it again, and I heard, "Ohhhhh." And I just thought, boy, this is really a chord for these kids. And I was teaching it, because the day before, at least five kids had left their thumb drives in the library. And they were like, "Well, we can't, we, we can't get our H-drive at home." So, there was the need, and because I had the technology, I was able to fill that need right away with, with that piece of equipment. So, thank, thank you so much, and thank you, everybody who made that happen.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, Ann Welton, Helen B. Stafford. As Dr. Seuss would say, "But that is not all." No, that is not all. It'd be a little more scripted than Hallie, because I forget. As one of the teacher librarians in the Tacoma District, I want to express our heartfelt thanks, along with that of our students and our families, to the board, Superintendent Santorno, Deputy Superintendent Garcia, and Sean Taylor, for the tremendous support the library programs had this year. The results are palpable, and students who are enthused about reading, motivated by the acquisition of new books, a process in which they participated, and ever more fluent in the use of web-based resources and tech presentation skills. Our inclusion under the IT umbrella has brought us alignment with the skill set we need to be most effective in teaching students to exploit virtual and print resources. It's gratifying to find my students becoming more adept at full-meal deal use of Sway, which, if you don't know, is presentation software, but it sounds really. Anyway, they're better than I am, and they dance better, too. And to see them navigating Office 365 with assurance. They're also able to find information in databases, and more and more frequently, they eschew Wikipedia as the final word. Among the many things that have served to bolster and grow our program this year are two phenomenally helpful and informative instructional facilitators, Kim Williams and Kristy Stanek, that are assigned nearly full-time to the libraries from IT. The amazing book budget, allowing us to refresh and update collections district-wide, and a laptop cart for every library, which is tech access we have long needed. And most of all, the visionary and challenging leadership provided by Dave Davis and Hannah Benrow. They've not only helped us out with materials and time, but have challenged us to move our programs out of the library and into the classroom. As Susanna Panter comes on board next year, we look forward to helping her create another nationally-recognized library program. Thank you for including us under IT, for helping us to move our facilities into the 21st century, and for your wonderful and continuing support.
Thank you, Ann, for being a leader also. Any more? All right, I think that closes our public comment. Item seven, we have already had item 7-1. Item 7-2, Human Resources Update. I believe Assistant Superintendent Dr. Nolan, this is yours.
Great, thank you. Good evening, Superintendent Santorno, President Viall, and members of the board. This presentation may not be as riveting as what we have seen before this, but hang in there, we're going to have some great information regarding an update for Human Resources. And before I go further, I'd like to acknowledge two HR team members who are here with us this evening. We have Director Kelly Webster of Operations and HR Manager Steve Diedrich. Would you please give a wave? Yay, happy wave, okay. So I am here this evening, as this says, to provide an update. And what I'd like to point out is that this evening's update will be an overview, but in the board packet tomorrow you'll find some extremely helpful data that will help answer some clarifying questions that you may have tonight as we ponder through this information. I'd like to bring us back to a year ago this month when HR committed to establishing metrics and quarterly reports, and that's what you will find in tomorrow's Friday Board Packet, is a quarterly report that gets into our HR metrics and gets deeper into the data. We committed to improving the selection and hiring process as well as improving customer service. I'd also like to point out that this PowerPoint this evening will look similar to one that I shared in January, but that's just so that we can have some consistency as to what you hear about with the updates with Human Resources. In order for us to successfully navigate through those goals that we committed to one year ago this month, it required us to really streamline and focus on internal professional development that's very focused and ongoing for our team members. We focused on improving processes and efficiencies and I'm very proud to say that we also applied lean principles to work group restructuring. So we really analyzed the workflow, the work that each department or subdivision within the department is focusing on, and how we could make it more lean in order to gain efficiencies. And with that, we also made it a concerted effort to engage our stakeholders in a different way. And we're doing this through our HR Advisory Committee, which brings on principals, food and nutritious, food and nutrition personnel, our TEA President, and many others to the table to get their input and to get their feedback on how things are going in Human Resources so that we can get that stakeholder view as we consider our improvements for our efficiencies. And we committed to customer surveys. What do our customers believe? What is their perception about how we handle our daily work communication with our customers, whether it's someone who's applying to the district or someone who is in the district? We do send out random customer surveys to seek their feedback so that we can use that to reflect and grow accordingly. And we committed to enhanced communications and employee support. I'm happy to say that we have quadrupled our communications this year and we believe that it is making an improvement with employee engagement and at the very least, we are supplying timely information to people regarding things like certificate renewal, CBA language, and different things that impact different employees' daily lives. As I previously shared with you in January, we have become a part of the Council of the Great City Schools and we are reporting our data through the KPI, our Key Performance Indicators, through the Act Point KPI. And what this does for us is it really helps us to understand what our data trajectory looks like and how we compare to other school districts that are, many of them are larger, but many of them are also our size. So it gives us a great comparative analysis so that we know if our workflow measures up or not. And we are committed to looking at the data and having this data available to us helps us to really focus on the concept of measuring twice and cutting once. It helps prepare us in our decision-making so that our decisions are not based on what we think, but rather what the data is telling us. And that leads us into the KPIs, the Key Performance Indicators, in which we have focused on for this school year. Now, what I'd like to say about these KPIs is they are not the only areas of focus, but they are the ones that we are highlighting this evening and have really dedicated our data analysis around. And we have teacher vacancies on the first day of school and that's for obvious reasons. We really would like high-quality staff in front of our students from day one. We have focused on the time to hire certificated staff and in the future, we will continue to monitor that and I'll talk about some future goals with our KPIs a little later in this presentation, but please know that that translates to satellite staff as well. But our key, our key group this year has been the certificated staff members. We focused on new teacher retention and effective educators for all students, which is, effective educators is the new terminology under ESSA and previously it was the highly qualified teachers under No Child Left Behind. The rationale for the reason that we chose these KPIs is we really believe that they help us focus on the bottom line of promoting academic excellence. Every hire matters and it really, it really matters on the front lines in the schools and it ultimately will promote academic excellence, equity, employee engagement. It is our goal to retain highly effective staff and for us to be positioned so well and understand our data so thoroughly that we once again have that first mover advantage when it comes to hiring. And here you can see the same slide that I shared in January, which tells about the number of teacher vacancies on the first day of school in 1415, the number that was this year, which is 14, and our goal for 1617 is to have 12 teacher vacancies or less on the first day of school. This is an illustration of the various stages that we have with our time to hire. When you work with a public school system and you're responsible to ensure safety for all students, there's many, many pieces to the hiring process, one of which includes fingerprinting and background checks. And so, we really needed to break down the stages so that we could understand what's in our internal locus of control and what's in our external locus of control when it comes to hiring so that we can lean up in the areas in which we have direct responsibility and oversight of. And you can see here in this bar graph, some of the information that's available to us regarding the time to hire. In 2013-14, it took us an average of 29 days. And then I'd like to continue moving to the right of the slides that you see in front of you and notice that for 1516, when we started monitoring the data and really digging into how we could impact our practices around the time to hire, which really started October 1st until the current time, we have actually decreased our time to hire from 34 days from last year to 23 days for this year. Now, I think that this is a testimony of that whole concept of what gets measured gets done. And so, when we are able to identify the stages and identify where we can make some efforts of improvement, that's what really has helped us to be able to streamline this process and reduce the number. And you see that our goal for 2016-17 was 28 and to this point, we are absolutely on target for meeting that goal as we are currently under that number. This slide right here presents our KPI about new teacher retention. We thought it would be great to establish and share with you what the current data tells us around teacher retention for this year. So that's this year with our new teacher cohort, first-year teachers. Now, what you see on the left is a pie graph that demonstrates all of our new teachers, including our replacement contracts. So those are contracts where they're one-year only, maybe because someone was on a leave or we started a position after a particular time in the school year, so it's what's called a replacement contract. And you can see that we will have 73% of those people remaining after the first year. That's to date, but I have to tell you, these numbers change just as people resign, et cetera, throughout this school year. And on the right, we took out the number of the replacement contracts because essentially, those are employees that are within our internal locus of control because they are not people that we have to pull out because we do not, we're not obligated to a contract, although we would love to give some of them a contract for sure next year, but that's all based on FTE, et cetera. But what this tells us is that 97% of our teachers to date will remain on for our second year. And that also tells us, when we compare ourselves to the Council of the Great City Schools, that that is far above the median and I attribute that to the great work in teaching and learning and our partnership with them on new teacher retention and the best grant and the focus on providing mentors and focused professional development for those teachers. And here we move into the effective educators for all. ESSA calls it effective educators. We've added the "for all students" component and you can see the notation down on the bottom that this was, this has taken effect as of December 10, 2015. We still have some out-of-field compliance efforts because we do need to have high-quality staff members teaching our students and that is a formal belief of our district, not only because we're told we need to do it, but we believe in high-quality talent in front of our students. But I'm happy to report to you that in this case, as you can see, we have a small percentage of teachers who are in classrooms where they might not be considered in that category of having the proper endorsement. But also note that we have increased flexibility around that with the effective educators and so we don't have to work under the more difficult constraints that were under No Child Left Behind, which we believe gives us an even greater opportunity to have effective educators in the classroom based on their performance, based on what we see on a daily basis. And that comes in the form of what the rubric standards for the Cell 5D around effective instructional strategies looks like, as well as those soft skills, teachers who are willing to go to the mat, teachers who have the passion to do what it takes each and every day. And those are the kinds of things that weren't measured under No Child Left Behind and it looks like under ESSA, even though it hasn't been defined, we're heading into that kind of, an arena where we can take a look at those softer skills as opposed to just what a credential may tell us. And this is a glimpse into our customer service survey. I am pleased to report that we've had lots of excellence and lots of very goods and when we find out about the fair or even the good, we analyze the data and see how we can improve our customer service so that all of our, all of our customers walk away feeling like they were very well-served by Human Resources and by our committed personnel. So let's fast-forward a little bit into 2016-17. We are committed to continue on with the KPIs that we shared this evening. We will continue to monitor all of those KPIs so that we can learn and grow and get more efficient and be better prepared to serve our community. But we will also add on some others and they are listed right here, but I'd like to just highlight them briefly. We will focus on accuracy rates. So when we, when we go through our HR actions, what percentage of the time are we accurate? Or do we make mistakes and need to repeat the particular task? Because accuracy rate increases proficiency and I do need to point out that these are all part of the identifiers through the Council of Great City Schools, so we will be continuing our partnership and work with them. We will examine our exit interviews at a higher level. We've been working on refining those exit interviews so that we can really understand why people are choosing to leave and we have already started to monitor that data because we don't want to just focus on new teacher retention, but we want to focus on experienced teacher retention as well. We have monitored our substitute placement rate, meaning the positions that are filled each day, but we will monitor that more carefully and identify trends that maybe break down to particular groups such as, for example, our emergency substitutes or substitutes who are at the elementary level, so on, et cetera. We'll dig deeper into that data. We will monitor the National Board Certification rate. We are going to examine our internal investigations. What is our process, what does our process look like? Although we have began that work this year to ensure that we are wrapping up investigations and moving forward quickly so that the impact of staff members isn't as, as great and ultimately for our students. So that's an area of focus that will be data-driven for next year. And we will continue our work through the sound partnership of examining our health benefits cost per enrolled employee and make some comparisons to how we compare to other local districts as well as those as set forth by the Council of the Great City Schools. And those are not a representation of all the KPIs we'll focus on, but just some highlights for you this evening. And as far as the data component, I'd like to just bring you back to the fact that tomorrow in the Friday Report, you'll have a complete report with progress towards our SMART goals around the KPIs, as well as some defined data analysis so that you can dig deeper into the information that I shared with you this evening. We are all about that talent, the early acquisition of high-quality talent, and it is an extreme pleasure to work with such a great team who is focused on doing the very best and understanding the connection that Human Resources has to the overall direction of the district and that hiring matters and what we do counts towards accomplishing our goals. So thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. Director Heinz, questions?
Thank you. Three questions. I appreciate the thorough report this evening. On slide number six, effective educators for all students, could you go into a little more detail what that entails? How's that determined? How's it measured?
Okay, and let's see, if I, did I pass that one up? I'd like for everyone to be able, there we go. So there's, there's the slide.
Actually, that's not the, I'm sorry, the slide number, on my deck, it's slide number six.
Well, yeah, I went too far. Yep, here we go, I see the numbers now. Okay, here we are. So the effective educators for all students, this, the parallel, No Child Left Behind was the highly qualified teachers component. And under the Every Student Succeeds Act, it is now called Effective Educators for All Students. And we do not have a clear set of criteria that's currently available to us from the state or federal government on what this definition looks like. However, I am part of the task force for the state to work on descriptors of what effective educators look like, what we believe they look like for the state of Washington. And so, having that opportunity to work with a dedicated team of people who are able to influence this, I can tell you some, some up-to-date information. And when I spoke about the soft skills, you know, how do we measure behaviors? How do we identify teachers who will, you know, they, not only can they create a lesson plan, not only can they engage students, but how do we measure their willingness to do what it takes each and every day? So one piece that this group, this task force, has a high level of interest in is being able to talk about those behaviors in addition to those content area types of skills that come along through coursework, that may come along through a final assessment, if you will, at the end of student teaching or at the end of their educational experience. But we have a vested interest in identifying some other skills that are necessary to be an effective educator. You will have no, you probably may have noticed about six or eight weeks ago in a Friday Report, maybe it was more like four weeks ago, we had a report in there that showed some, some work we've been doing on some early identifiers of what we believe here in Tacoma Public Schools. And when I say "we," that's with the input of cabinet members, it's with the input of some principals who we reached out to, the input of our KPI advisory team, the input actually of Director Cobb, who mentioned something in January that really resonated with us. There were some descriptors of what, what we preliminarily have designed and captured as what, as to what we believe an effective educator looks like and we were sure to stay draft on that because we also believe that it will continue to grow and develop as time goes on and as we get more guidance from the state.
Assistant Superintendent Nolan, the data you presented, is that based on the old definition of content area?
The data that we presented is actually based on what's called out-of-field experience and I feel like we have a pro in the audience and her name is Kelly Webster and I can have her come up and share more carefully or thoughtfully with you, but the... But the data is actually new data because we have a new term called out-of-field experience versus the highly qualified teacher, and out-of-field is different than having the proper endorsement. Kelly, I don't want to butcher this.
Roll on up.
Come on up. She's kind of an expert.
Kind of. So the previous No Child Left Behind required the districts to ensure that teachers met the highly qualified portion of that, which is different than the endorsement. So endorsement is a state rule, and highly qualified was a federal rule. So we concentrated, because that's where we were audited, on the federal side for the Title II piece on the highly qualified. If a teacher had an endorsement in reading and they had to teach math, at that time, they could take the NES or the Westian math, they could be highly qualified, the federal government said, "You're fine." That has all gone away, and now that through the ESSA, they really are saying to the states, "States, you figure out what is a highly effective teacher." And so right now in the state of Washington, one of the criteria that they've identified is teachers who are teaching in their field, which is in their endorsement. So the PESB is the governing body, the state of Washington, who determines what endorsement can teach what content area. So we use their tables to determine whether or not, when we match them up, if they teach this, do they have the right endorsement? So we look at that all the time based on eSchool Plus, based on their certificate. We do a lot of work with the principals, and then we will report out.
I would like to highlight, thank you very much, Kelly.
Thanks.
That what this is doing for us is it's empowering us to not have to be so rigid when it comes to assigning teachers to a classroom. For example, an ELA teacher may be able to successfully teach social studies or history, and this opportunity is freeing up our district and other districts to be able to make decisions based on how well teachers are doing, not necessarily whether or not they have this proper endorsement or qualification, but rather we're able to use, even consider, for example, how, what their performance evaluation looks like. And I'm not saying that we're doing that, but that's something that the ESSA group is talking about. Let me be very clear, I'm not saying that we're doing that.
Thank you.
But there's potential for that as a consideration.
When I hear effective, I think that, I guess I'm curious how that's going to be measured. When I hear that it's just simply endorsed, you have, you're teaching a subject that you're endorsed in, you may be a subject matter expert, you may not be able to convey that knowledge to your students and be effective. And I would hate for this to go down the path of No Child Left Behind and try to tie it to test scores. So is there any early indication of how they're going to measure the effectiveness? Not just simply, are you endorsed properly, but the effectiveness of the teaching and the student learning?
That is actually one of the main discussions when the task force meets because quantitative data seems to be the easy answer, which comes in the form of test scores. But there's a high level of recognition that that's not the only way that we can measure, that there is to measure effectiveness. So there's no decision to date, it's very early on, there's lots of controversy, as there's many types of stakeholders who are represented on this task force. But I can just say, stay tuned, and that, the fact of the note or test scores as only a part of it, there's definitely a strong voice that's at the table regarding that matter.
I think my last two questions aren't as challenging. On slide number eight, where we have the number of vacancies on the first day of school. For context, how many teachers do we have?
Seventeen oh nine or something.
Eighteen hundred.
Eighteen, yeah.
So fourteen out of eighteen hundred is pretty good.
Not too shabby. Yeah. It's pretty good, and when we think in terms of gee whiz, we don't know what the student enrollment is going to look like, we're going off of projections. And so we use all of the data that we have to make effective decisions. When you think about that, it's not too shabby. And so actually, we were a little reluctant to say twelve, but we felt like if we didn't go lower than fourteen, we wouldn't be setting a very good goal. So we're going to do our best.
My last question on slide number ten, the time to hire. How did you arrive at twenty-eight days as the goal? Where we had been at twenty-nine, and then it peaked at thirty-four. The second half of this year, it's twenty-three. Is there a reason that you chose twenty-eight?
We started off thinking in terms of, okay, what would ten percent look like? So if we talk about the thirty-four days, you know, if we took out ten percent, that would be roughly a decrease of three point four. Then we thought, well, what about if we went to twenty percent? And so we had conversations about percentage-wise, and you'll see in the Friday report tomorrow, the SMART goal that's around that, that will actually call out the percentage that, in which we hope to decrease. To be completely transparent, which why wouldn't we be, we wanted to have a goal that we felt we could succeed at. We are a department who doesn't have a strong tradition of examining the data to make decisions, and we wanted to, we really wanted to feel like we could attain that goal, and we believed that we could influence this goal and attain that number of twenty-eight. So it was through some rigorous reflection, some discussion, and seeking a percentage that we felt was rigorous, yet doable.
Thank you.
Director Cobb?
My question takes us back to slide twelve. On here, can you tell us what the definition of challenging school is in this context? Does it align with the, like, free reduced-price lunch threshold for a National Board bonus, or is there some other definition used here?
And you said challenging.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What is challenging in this context?
Yes, it is all of those things that you just mentioned are, how does their, how do their test scores look? What does the trajectory look like? That's a piece of the formula. Free and reduced lunch is a piece of the formula. So, you know, Title I schools are, often there's a parallel, but there could be a slight variation where there's, the trajectory of test scores isn't looking as high, and maybe their free and reduced lunch isn't school-wide, but there's still an impact.
And then related to that, do you have any sense of how those twelve teachers are dispersed? How many schools they're at?
I don't know that number right off the top of my head. I could certainly look into that.
Okay, thank you.
But I can tell you that we are very, very thoughtful about placement and following up and designing plans to help teachers be successful.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any more? Okay, great. I really appreciate the effort of taking an organization that for many years pushed paper and turning it in, your department, and I've seen HR where that's what they did, to now that you're really an integral part of what we do in terms of data-driven and evidence-based. And I think that's going to make our district much stronger in our hiring processes. And that's what I see here as we go forward. The effective teacher thing, the comment I had on that was, how, I want to ask you, how, when you measure that effectiveness, I think this gets kind of what you were getting at, Director Hines, would not TPEP be a part of that evaluation of that teacher in determining effectiveness?
That's part of the conversation that's happening at the state level, and again, there's all sorts of stakeholders, including WEA representatives. And so there's, you've got a variety of people with strong opinions. That has been a conversation because the TPEP evaluation may in fact be more exemplary of what teacher behaviors look like and more indicative of performance versus a credential. So that's the conversation that's at the table.
So this committee is just started.
Yes, we're early. This is early.
I don't mean to be picking on, or anything, but you know.
Nope, it's a great question, and the timeline for this is, the state is planning on submitting their ESSA plan in October, I believe. And so we won't have any specific answers until that plan is submitted. As Director Nolan mentioned, there's a lot of, we can keep you up to date with a number of different conversations that are taking place. And we have several staff that are participating in several different committees to try to help shape what we believe locally should be included, which we're excited about, but there won't be any certainty for a little while.
Great. Thank you. The other comment is just looking at these slides, the small numbers, I mean, your retention when you pull out the contracts, three, ninety-seven, ninety-eight percent is pretty darn good of eighteen hundred teachers. Or the two hundred and some that we start as new teachers. And if you look at that slide, if you look at the number of teachers quote-unquote, teach the old term, teaching out of endorsement, that's pretty darn small. Twelve teachers out of eighteen hundred, or however that number comes of where they are assigned, is, I think, indicative of your department's skills in assessing and making sure that we do have the, whatever, highly qualified, highly effective teachers in our classroom with our kids, and that those numbers are almost statistically minuscule in terms of the ones that are not. And I know that we do, we are looking at, you know, different uses with CTE and things like that, teachers for their ability to cover those classes. I know there's some new flexibility in that also, and that, would that possibly enter into some of that number that's quote-unquote "out of endorsement" or "out of area"?
That could certainly be an influence and would vary, you know, from year to year. But certainly an influence.
Does the CTE flexibility now help us a little bit?
Yes, it does.
Could you comment on that just a bit, so people know what that is?
Well, because teachers or people who have experience in a particular area but perhaps not a teaching certificate under the CTE guidelines, if they are a master in their field, maybe electronics, for example, and I'm just pulling that out as an example.
Just a big example, so we can understand what that means.
Yeah, then there's the potential to get a CTE certificate because they've invested so many hours of their life as a practitioner in that field, and so that can help them gain the CTE certification to be able to teach in that particular area of industry. Now, what that also means is that they wouldn't be able to go teach another content area, such as English, math, or science, but it has allowed us to hire some high-quality staff members who really understand a particular craft.
Okay. Thank you. Great report. Look forward to seeing the Friday report and, you know, your work since you've taken over is very, very impressive. Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on, are any further questions or comments? Okay, moving on, consent agenda, the motion for adoption, please.
I move a gen, adoption on the consent calendar.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt a consent agenda. Are there any questions or comments of the board? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Consent agenda is adopted. Item nine, policy matters. We have no policy matters before us this evening. Quarterly financial update. There is no quarterly financial update. Presentations on the financial health of the district will be made during regular board meetings on a quarterly basis. Monthly financial statements can be found on the district website at www.tacomaschools.org/financialreports. Item number eleven, curriculum and instruction, eleven-one, approval of the Tacoma Tide Flat Certification Program Memorandum of Understanding between City of Tacoma and the Tacoma School District. Move approval. Oh, I'm sorry. That's okay. I'm kidding. That's okay. Assistant Superintendent Pace, please.
Thank you.
It's okay.
The Assistant Superintendent of K-12 Support recommends that the Board of Directors approve the initial memorandum of understanding between the City of Tacoma and Tacoma School District for the Tacoma Tide Flat Certification Program.
Now I'll move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt item eleven-one. Ms. Pace, could you briefly explain to us and to the public what this is? I think it's an awesome opportunity for our kids.
I think it's awesome, too, and I've invited John Page to come because he's very excited about this program, too, and he's just really wanting to speak to you about it. So I'm inviting John Page to come in and say a few words. Mr. Page?
John is always excited, which we like. Great.
President Viall and Superintendent Santornal, members of the board, thank you for the opportunity to speak a little bit on behalf of the Tacoma Tide Flats Certification Program that you're considering tonight. The journey, it's been a learning journey, and I feel very comfortable bringing to you a package that meets requirements of industry down under Tacoma Tide Flats that has been generated through a lot of conversations over a length of time. I apologize for the time it's taken to bring this to you, but I do believe it's a package that'll work. The journey really began, I think, in Dr. Garcia's office, looking out the window, and as we overlook the Tide Flats and the universe of opportunities for livable wage.
I just want to let people know that I do work and not just look out the window.
Glad you qualified, John.
But looking out over the Tide Flats and the universe of opportunities for livable wage, in-demand jobs associated with international trade, I think many around the table tonight recognize that the port of Tacoma is the sixth-largest shipping port in North America. It's a commerce hub for the region, involves logistics, automated warehousing, transportation, merchant marine, and environmental protection. Those are the three pathways that we've chosen to start the program with your approval. And how we came about that is rather than just start with a course curriculum that we often do as educators and think about what we think would be a comprehensive program, what we did is we reached out to the employers and asked, "What are the entry-level positions here? And what are the certifications that would help a student gain access to those positions and then grow over time into some of those really high-wage careers?" And so, for example, for one of the pathways is the Merchant Marine credential. That credential mirrors, it looks a lot like a passport, but it's a red cover instead of a blue. And instead of being stamped each time that you go to a different country, each time that you earn a certificate that is approved by the United States Coast Guard, you get a little stamp in that Merchant Marine credential. So a person would advance their credentials over time, and of course, their wages, their salaries, and their opportunities would advance with that. We believe that with the Merchant Marine credential, the students would get about a seven-day training program, and from that, they'd have basic safety, fire safety, cold-water immersion. Those are some examples of what it is. It's a lot of activity-based, get kids a feel for it, what might be out there for that universe of possibilities. As looking at logistics and warehousing, the entry level really is forklift operations, but there's a myriad of forklift, different types of forklifts. And so what we're going to start, with your approval, we would look at starting with the warehouse certification, warehouse forklift certification. I think you probably see in your documents the OSHA-10 certification. So I'm talking about certification, certification, I'm not talking about class, class, class. And the idea is to get the kids into the industry, and then they'll have different routes to go in and further their education. The journey, there's a term there called Hazwhopper, hazardous waste operations and emergency response. You know, part of the journey is just learning that in order to work on any of these jobs, even our own construction sites at Tacoma Public Schools with our remodels that Mr. Marakami oversees, at least one person has to have their Hazwhopper certificate to even conduct the work. That's part of the journey, and I got to tell you, the amount of partners that want to play, when you look out that window on the eighth floor, it's really, why not? And I'll tell you what, it's, when we talk around here about KPIs and ESSA and highly qualified and the world of education that we so well understand, when you go down to that world, I mean, their acronyms are just as complex as ours. And that's the exciting part of the journey. If we can break through with a simple summer program that would start with twenty-four students from Tacoma Public Schools, and just, if you'd give us the permission to build that partnership and let other people come in that want to play, I think we're going to build something here in Tacoma that would be very unique, not only to the state of Washington, but potentially a national model.
Can I, just a couple of quick comments. First and foremost, this started with you, with your strategic plan benchmark around students earning industrial certification. And so the journey goes a little bit beyond the fourth, back to here in this room, in there. I want to give credit to the City of Tacoma, who have been fabulous partners. Mr. Chris Wright and John Page have been spending hours and hours, and there have been a lot of folks that have said, "Oh, yeah." a lot of folks that have said, oh, yeah, great, 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 but have not been able to operationalize this, this idea that our kids are and can be career-ready, and that not every career takes a two- or a four-year degree, and that we honor those at the same level. And so, there is, with your approval, a tremendous opportunity to be extremely innovative, to redefine what summer looks like, and lay the pathways for future opportunities, not only during summer, but extending the day and changing the way that we ultimately do the day. And so, we're excited to present this to you, and we look forward to your discussion and hopefully your approval.
Great, thank you. Questions, comments?
I'm very supportive of this. I just had a question. In the MOU, it specifically references students, juniors, or seniors that are behind two or more credits. Is there a particular reason that we're limiting this to credit-deficient students?
Thank you for the question. We followed some of our model and some of the learning from Summer Jobs Two-Five-Three, and so we did put credit retrieval as a point of interest in there to help kids graduate. So we tied it in with the strategic plan goal of academic excellence and supporting graduation rates along with workforce development.
There's the, also, as we look at funding opportunities to expand in future, there's a pattern that folks like to look for is what students are traditionally not been served. It doesn't mean that we have to stay with this in the, in the long, in future steps, but when we also started, who do, with such limited seats, who do we want to make sure that those seats get to? And those are students that have traditionally not been served by the standard opportunities.
Thank you.
Okay, for questions, comments? Just, John, you made that comment about Hazwhoppers. Some of these certifications, for some of our kids who might think about becoming a firefighter, these certifications give them a leg up. Hazmat, Hazwhopper is included in that, some of the others. So they're not just solely restricted to what they might do at the port, but they are prerequisites for entrance into being able to become a firefighter or other occupations, law enforcement and so on. So thank you for the work that you've done on this. I've been tracking this, as you know, and I see this as another one of our innovative opportunities to reach our kids.
One quick question. What kind of education to students comes with this? Like, how do students learn about the program, learn about the opportunity?
Thank you, thank you for the question. I'm waiting for the yes from our Board of Directors tonight, and then we'll put that out there, and we're going to engage, we're going to work with our career counselors, which we have one at each of our Conference of High Schools. We're targeting juniors and seniors that are coming up on age seventeen and eighteen. We're going to use a similar process that we use in Summer Jobs Two-Five-Three as far as the promotional materials as well as the application for review.
In addition, that process, if you're not familiar, sometimes it's just going out and touching in an appropriate manner, reaching out to students.
That was not part of-
Glad you qualified.
Reaching out to students that, and saying, have you heard about this? And with a smaller number of twenty-four, it's intentional. There are so many seats available. And if you choose to approve this, then we will immediately look to build on its success and look at other industry opportunities, and we're excited that there might be some right around the corner.
Great. Okay, any further questions or comments?
I'd like to make one comment. This is really exciting, and you may have more than twenty-four students doing it. So if, and sometimes I know in that Summer Two-Five-Three, some of the students don't show up or only show up the first day, so I would really think it'd be great to have a waiting list and call people up and make sure we use all those spots. It'd be wonderful.
Thank you.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes four-oh. You have your yes, John. I expect you'll be recruiting tomorrow, no idea.
In closing, I really want to say thank you for putting the trust in our team to put this package together. It's going to be a journey. Christopher Wright with the City of Tacoma is, he's all in, and he's done a wonderful job. He couldn't be here tonight. He is out of state. And I'm hoping that the board will consider having us come back and give a program review and have Christopher Wright here to share out our learning and in our next steps. Thank you again.
Thank you, John, for all the work that you do for us. Wright, item twelve, business matters, twelve-one, approval of increased cost for the sampling and testing of water quality at various school sites. Ms. Medina?
The Chief Financial Officer recommends that the Board of Directors approve the continued water sampling and testing services by Centric Analytic Labs LLC through August thirty-first, two thousand sixteen, in an amount not to exceed three hundred thousand dollars.
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt item twelve-one. Ms. Medina, could you just kind of give us a brief overview of this?
I'm going to hand that over to Mr. Merakami.
Oh, Steve.
Thank you, President Viall. Just an overview. In the last twenty-three business days, we've conducted six thousand five hundred and twenty water fixture samples. Of those tests, we've sifted through every single one of them and tracked five hundred fixtures that came in above our, our more restrictive action limit that the district decided to go with. And under Superintendent Santorni's leadership, we've already replaced three hundred and sixty of the five hundred fixtures. So about seventy-two percent have been replaced and are being retested to make sure that they're within our action limits.
Great, thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries four-oh. Item twelve-two, architectural contract acceptance for the new Browns Point Elementary School Major Capital Project. Mr. Merakami?
The Chief Operating Officer recommends that the Board of Directors authorize the superintendent and/or designee to enter into an agreement with TCF Architecture for architectural services in the amount of two million, two hundred ninety-three thousand, two hundred and thirty-five dollars for the new Browns Point Elementary School project.
Motion of approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt motion twelve-two. Questions or comments? Mr. Merakami, Director Wenskill?
So I had some concerns about this design, since it's only seven hundred and fifty square feet. Is that still the direction that we're going in this building?
The square footage of the direct instructional classrooms is approximately seven hundred and fifty square feet, but there is supporting space adjacent and around each classroom, so that as we look to see what this current educational model, we're trying to stay away from Twenty-First Century because we're already well into it, but next-generation classrooms provide the opportunity to get outside the four walls of the classroom. So we have space for discourse, we have space for that direct instruction, but then we have opportunities around each classroom to provide individual exploration, small group, large group, and so we're expanding the actual square footage per teacher, per student, but the direct instruction area is a little smaller.
So what, years ago, we had a thousand square feet per class. Then we reduced it to eight fifty, and we determined that that wasn't enough. We went back up to a thousand. And now you're saying we're going to eliminate twenty-five percent of the space within the classroom. And, you know, so many of those elementaries, I was at an elementary yesterday, the students really aren't old enough to be, to go outside into another space by themselves, and they, the teachers need them right around them. So I am just, since these are such, such an expensive part of what we do, and you can't redo it for another fifty years, I, I just don't like this direction of these small classes. And I'm just going to vote against this, just as a protest. I hate to do it, but I just don't think that architects should be telling us how we're teaching. I think we should be telling them how we're going to teach in the future.
Okay. I don't think the architects are telling us, this is teacher-driven, building-driven. I know that. And I think what we're hearing, excuse me, trying to talk tonight, I'm talking on a cough drop, I apologize. I think what we've heard from teachers and, and you saw Sherman, I'm sure if you talked to Principal Tanishi and so on, Sherman is a nice building, but it wasn't designed for the kind of instruction that the kids are doing there. You saw them out in the parking lot, and you saw them, and then the classrooms aren't set up for that, and they're doing a great job, and it's a great building, but it was set up when we were doing, Sherman was built about ten years ago, I believe, when we were still doing pretty much the standard type of teaching where the teacher stood in the front of the room. And now with the collaboration, as the, as the young man so well described to us tonight, we all work together, and we learn from that, that this space, if you look at what the architect showed us, that space, well, it can expand and contract, and it's not all about going outside. There's space outside those classrooms where they can be out and the kids can be doing collaboration and, and working together. And, and from what, you know, I've listened to and been to some, where the meetings that the architects don't tell us how to teach, we tell the architects what we want in those buildings, and that doesn't mean us as a board, that is those people who are going to be in those classrooms, and that's what the teachers are saying. They want that kind of instructional space that allows collaboration, allows the kind of things that we saw tonight that the Sherman kids are doing. So I'm going to vote yes for this. I think it's a great design, and I think the neighbor talked with people up there who have said that this is what they want as a neighborhood, and they've been very pleased with the inclusion of them, from some of the seniors there to the parents, by the architects, by TCF, in terms of what kind of building they're going to get. So, thank you. Other questions or comments? Director, Director Hines?
Well, I would echo what President Viall said. I don't believe, and Steve, you and your team did a great job when we had the study session, and we sat and we listened, and it was interactive, and we talked. We have a manual that dictates what we want to accomplish in the building, so architects aren't telling us, we're telling them, and then they compete to do it the way that we've told them to do it. I think that's a very clear and direct way of having those conversations with architects. So it's not a whim, it's not about aesthetics, it's about functionality. And I think the direction that we're headed, I also recall that the actual functional space of the classroom, when we talked about in that nine hundred to thousand range versus what you're getting with the seven fifty, is pretty close in terms of usable space. We're not losing that, technically not losing that much usable space. It's just more flexible, and it's consistent with, I'm going to use Twenty-First Century Learning, it's consistent with how kids are being taught. It's, the technology is evolving rapidly. We had our librarian speak earlier about the ability to take technology into classrooms, you can take it outside, you can, that's the flexibility that our educators are telling us that they want. A question for you, was the principal at Browns Point involved in talking through what that facility would need in order to meet the needs of the teachers in the direction of that school?
Most definitely, yeah. Principal Greek has been a phenomenal voice in the conversation, and his staff is with us. And this process, the book you mentioned, our educational specifications, that's been years in the making, and it's had teachers, students, principals, level directors, district administrators, and the highest leadership involved in those conversations.
Thank you.
Superintendent Santorni?
I was just going to ask the question that, you know, to make sure that Browns Point teachers, you know, have, have had a chance to weigh in. I know we have teachers on the committee and the principal, but it's, I do think it's important to make sure that, you know, teacher that's not on the committee or, you know, not involved still has had an opportunity to look at the plans and has an opportunity to buy in and say, yes, this will enhance the teaching that I do every day.
Yeah. The Design Advisory Committee is made up of teachers from representative groups across the school with community members, but the design team has taken at, at different intervals, the full design to the full staff meetings, so that everybody gets to hear the direction, gets to have their voices heard in the process. And then the folks, the teachers that are there with the Design Advisory Committee, spending the three or four hours extending their day to lend their voice, are charged with the task of taking questions, comments, pictures, visions, back to their, their peers. So.
President Viall?
Yes, Dr. Garcia.
Chief Operating Officer, Merakami, this is for the approval of the architect's selection, correct?
It is, correct.
We're not approving the design of Browns Point, correct?
Correct. This is for the selection of the local architectural firm, TCF.
Based out of Tacoma?
Two blocks away.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Passes three-one. Twelve-three, authorization for the purchase of floor covering for the new Stewart Middle School Major Capital Project. Mr. Merakami?
The Chief Operating Officer recommends that the Board of Directors authorize the superintendent and/or designee to purchase floor covering for the new Stewart Middle School project with Barrisford Company in agreement with KCDA in the amount of eight hundred thousand dollars excluding sales tax.
I move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt item twelve-three. Any questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries four-oh. Item twelve-four, approval of entering into a contract with Fire Protection, Inc., for alarm devices, sprinkler, extinguisher, inspection, and testing. Mr. Merakami?
The Chief Operating Officer recommends the Board of Directors authorize the superintendent's approval to enter into a contract with Fire Protection, Inc., with an optional, with option for an additional two years upon renewal for alarm service, alarm devices, sprinkler, extinguisher inspection, and testing.
I move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve item twelve-four. Questions or comments? Mr. Merakami? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries four-oh. Item twelve-five, approval of the two thousand sixteen, nineteen District Technology Plan. I believe, Dr. Garcia, you're going to speak to that.
The Deputy Superintendent on behalf of the Executive Director of Technology Services recommends that the Board of Directors approve the two thousand sixteen through two thousand nineteen District Technology Plan. Funding source, Technology Capital Fund and General Fund.
I move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the two thousand sixteen, two thousand nineteen District Technology Plan. Questions or comments of the board? I just want to make a comment. I really appreciate the response to Director Hines's question for laying out the budget and the sequencing of how that's going to occur, and we do know that it may change, but at least we have a fair idea. I know there's been a lot of work that's gone into this, and I really do appreciate the work of Sean and his staff. This gets, I think this puts us at a pretty high level for technology among school districts in the, in the state of Washington. So, hearing no questions or comments, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries four-oh. Item twelve-six, bid acceptance for Foss High School lighting, field lighting project. Mr. Merakami, as you know, this is a favorite of mine.
Yes. So if the board so moves, I do have a comment on equity during the discussion of this one. So for now, the Chief Operating Officer recommends the Board of Directors accept the bid for the construction of the Foss High School Field Lighting from Titan Earthworks in the amount of four hundred and sixty-eight thousand, three hundred and forty-two dollars excluding sales tax.
I move approval.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to accept, to accept the bid for Foss High School Field Lighting Project. Mr. Merakami, would you like to comment on this?
Thank you, President Viall. So while the games will be played under the Friday night lights of our major bowls, those high schools that don't have the bowls don't have the same access to practices during the evening. And so, per your leadership and your charge, while they weren't identified as dollars in our Promises Made campaign, in two thousand thirteen, we've, we've found dollars to bring Wilson High School and Foss to that same equitable level, so that their synthetic turf fields will be lit for night practice. And it'll also be a major benefit to the community.
Thank you, and I know that for those of us who had kids attend those schools back, it isn't, it was a real issue of equity. Lincoln and Stadium could practice, and now Mount T could practice later, they could sequence and they, you know, into the fall. So now we will be able to use those facilities on a much larger basis, and brings all of our schools on the same, hate to use the level, term level playing field, but it does. And I really thank you for finding that money, because some of us have been asking for that for a very long time. Okay, all those in favor, some probably saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries four-oh, and we will have equity among our sports. Okay. Approval of an inter-local agreement with the Highline School District, item twelve-seven. Dr. Garcia, please.
The Deputy Superintendent on behalf of the Assistant Superintendent of Support Services recommends the Board of Directors approves the inter-local agreement with Highline School District for the two thousand fifteen, sixteen school year.
Move approval. For a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the item twelve-seven. Dr. Garcia, is this just another special, special education agreement like we had last time?
Yes, I believe definite, hardened hearing.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments? All those- All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Uh, motion carries four oh. Uh, twelve eight, approval of interlocal agreement with the Vashon Island School District. Dr. Garcia, if you would, please.
I apologize, one second, I just lost my agenda. The Deputy Superintendent on behalf of the Assistant Superintendent of K twelve recommends that the Board of Directors approve the interlocal agreement with Vashon Island School District for the two thousand fifteen, sixteen school year.
I move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve item number twelve eight. Again, is this for special needs?
Yes.
I believe we approved one earlier. Okay, great, another extension. Uh, any questions or comments of Dr. Garcia? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, motion carries four oh. Uh, item twelve nine, authorization for the purchase of floor coverings for Foss High School. Mr. Murakami?
The Chief Operating Officer recommends that the Board of Directors authorize the superintendent and/or designated to purchase floor covering for Foss High School with Barrisford Company in agreement with KCDA in the amount of three hundred thousand dollars excluding sales tax.
I move approval.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to adopt item, uh, number twelve nine. Is there any questions or comments of the board? Hearing none, uh, all those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carries four oh. Uh, item number twelve ten, approval of Microsoft volume licensing campus agreement, year three of a three-year agreement. Uh, Dr. Garcia, is that you again?
Yes, please.
Thank you.
The Deputy Superintendent on behalf of the Executive Director of Technology Services recommends the Board of Directors approve the renewal of Microsoft volume licensing campus agreement for the two thousand sixteen, seventeen school year, funding source Technology General Fund.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve item twelve ten. Are there any questions or comments by members of the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries four oh. Uh, item tw- uh, twelve eleven, approval of Title One Part A grant application to OSPI, Office of Superintendent of Public Instruction. Dr. Garcia?
The Deputy Superintendent on behalf of the Assistant Superintendent of Students Services recommends that the Board of Directors approve the submission of the Title One Part A grant application in the amount of nine million, eight hundred and sixty-eight thousand, five hundred and ninety-six dollars to the Office of Superintendent of Public Instruction, and if funded, approve the expenditure of funds according to the appropriate guidelines.
Move approval.
Second.
Are there any questions or comments regarding this? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, for, motion carries four oh. Other business, there are no other business. Uh, item fourteen, report to the board. Item fourteen one, strategic plan, benchmark report, goal three, early learning. I believe Dr. Rahar and...
Ms. Ferguson.
Ferguson are gonna help us out on this. While they're setting up, I wanna welcome, uh, we have some University of Washington, Tacoma students here tonight, who I'm sure are learning a great deal about how we conduct business, and I will, um, ask of the board that we hang around for a couple minutes, because part of their assignment is to prove they were here, and they ask us to sign their agendas, which I believe they, we did for them last year, so welcome, we, we appreciate you being here tonight, and, uh, thank you.
Can we get them on camera, and then they've got...
Well, we could do that, yeah, they could tell you.
Kevin gave us the thumbs up, so he's got them on camera.
Yeah.
At least the back of them.
Yeah.
Video evidence.
Thank you.
Great, super.
President Viall?
Yes.
If I might just take a moment, as the team brings up in transitions, we've been learning a lot through our monitoring reports, and so tonight you're gonna see some adjustments. Uh, part of this comes from community feedback, uh, some of this comes from your feedback, and some of it comes from our own reflections of what's been working, what's not been working. And so, uh, some of those aha moments are, is this, um, sometimes we're presenting data that we've already presented, uh, just because our natural schedule is, is two benchmarks, and the data hasn't changed. Um, and so, we are gonna continue to share that data, but without a data will be in the appendix. If there's no new data, we'll just leave it in the appendix, uh, we will make sure that it's there for the community, uh, just like all the data is there twenty-four, seven, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. Uh, we'll be working with you on a new calendar to make sure that the data is presented in the most relevant time, so sometimes we've gotten in our natural schedule, 'cause monitoring reports have been pushed back, um, where data's two or three months away, and so we're gonna work with you in the future to make sure that that calendar is reset up. There'll be monitoring reports that looks at this year's data, uh, in reflection to how are the kids doing now, and then there'll be annual summary reports where you will be able to see what is that in comparison to other years. And so, there'll be a little bit of shift there. We will present, uh, we've gotten some great feedback with, uh, the use of arrows, uh, to highlight, um, trends. And so, we will be using arrows to highlight trends, and you'll see that, you know, uh, the negative arrow will be reflected in red, the positive arrow will be reflected in green, and then there'll be a, uh, a, a neutral arrow, which the trend is just showing you, there is no trend, it's showing you that the data is up, if you will, um, but not significant in that way. We will, like I said, continue to use, uh, the appendix, and then we will, those trends we, we're hoping will engage in, um, although we have a lot to celebrate in the Tacoma Public Schools and a lot of great efforts, we are very clear that we have a long ways to go in several areas, and so we will, um, really be looking at some of the key findings, uh, and trying to articulate at a whole different level the specificity of what does that mean for a student. Um, we'll never get to the place where we're able to talk to you about little Josh Garcia in, uh, Ms. Santorno's third grade classroom, but you'll be able to see, uh, our infrastructure and the supports that we're placing, uh, more specific and in targeted manners, and so, um, the team is ready to prepare it to you tonight. You'll see a pretty condensed report tonight, and that is specifically because, uh, there's, some of the benchmarks hasn't changed regarding, uh, state testing around the standards-based assessments, and so it does us no good to revisit that data.
I think we, I think we appreciate, um, that approach, or, you know, we've done a lot of due diligence on getting data together, and I think now we're at a point where we can look at trends and changes and make sure that we, you know, still have availability of the data, but not have to just go through stuff over and over and over again that we already know, and I, I know I personally appreciate that and the work, and, and we can continue to evolve that. I mean, this is seminal work for us as a school district, and I think we've done a pretty good job the last couple of years. So, with that, um, Assistant Superintendent Rahar and Mrs. Ferguson, uh, would you proceed forward?
We will do so. Good evening, President Viall, members of the board, Superintendent Santorno, Deputy Superintendent Garcia, our student representatives, and our audience both here and at home. Tonight, we are here to provide you with an update, as you've just heard, on Goal Three, the focus on early assessment intervention for pre-K to third grade to ensure academic success. As you heard, the benchmark we will review tonight is the number of students being served in our preschool programs. We'll provide you with an update from our, with an update comparatively to our last report in January, and then our annual report on all the early learning benchmarks for the two thousand fifteen, sixteen school year will be given in September, early next fall. The data on the other six benchmarks, as Dr. Garcia shared with you, that was shared at our January two thousand fif- sixteen monitoring report, is included in the appendix for your reference.
I would like to note...
I would like to note, as we look at our preschool enrollment trends, that our preschool data has been refined. Um, previously, this data included preschool students who were only receiving support services but not participating in preschool programs. Additionally, it was found that some students who were pre-registered for the following year were also being included too early, so these are accurate numbers as of May twelfth. For our preschool enrollment trends by region, we have Foss and Lincoln in Mount Oklahoma with the highest numbers of preschoolers being served, which reflects the, um, number of students with, um, that we would say that, um, uh, would fall into the lower income or, um, would meet the needs in the higher poverty areas of our city. You will see that Wilson did expand, because we did add, um, slots to the Hoyt Early Learning Hub this year. In our subgroups, we specifically look at these subgroups to ensure that our enrollment in preschool reflects the community that we're serving. Um, we make sure that our preschooler, our preschools are as diverse as our city is, and also as our district. I know, um, Director Hines asked the question, when we looked at our Hispanic population of serving twenty-eight percent, um, what that looked like comparatively to our district, which was at, um, twenty percent. So, um, to us, that shows that we are, um, meeting the needs of most of our students, the diversity of the students in our, um, uh, in the Tacoma area and our district. Also, this information helps us to disaggregate assessment, um, data, so we look at the, um, not only the needs of access to preschool for our students and families, but we also look at their, um, academic and social-emotional needs and services.
So, the arrows that you see are white there, as they show change from our two thousand fif- uh, our January two thousand fifteen report. So, this is just giving you a, an indication of how we've grown or not grown perhaps in some of our different subgroups since the report we gave you in January.
Continuing, looking at our subgroups for females and males, um, just, uh, increasing the female group, but still reflect, reflection of that we have more males in our preschool programs than females. In our special education programs, um, we do have some fluctuations in our programs depending on, um, if we have new students who are assessed through our child find program. Um, our free and reduced lunch had decreased in numbers, but still remained at seventy, seventy percent, and our ELL population went down slightly.
So, in this scenario, we want, uh, the inverse of the, what sometimes are described as gaps, so we want, um, the students that are traditionally qualified for free and reduced lunch, uh, traditionally maybe underrepresented in other areas, to have higher proportion of numbers, and the reason is, is because under your leadership, we have agreed that preschool is a support and intervention for future opportunities for students.
One other note, under free and reduced lunch, as the state is doing, uh, saturation data to look at expansion for E-CAP and Head Start, they pulled numbers for eligible three and four-year-olds and came up with a number of, um, twelve hundred, approximately twelve hundred eligible three and four-year-olds, and you can see we're serving approximately a thousand at the seventy percent free and reduced rate. Um, their eligibility is based on first and second grade, um, free and reduced lunch rates of, um, which is a, uh, it's a hard kind of formula to figure out, um, how they figure out who's eligible for, um, Head Start and preschool based on the hundred and thirty and hundred and ten percent, um, poverty level, but I think we're doing pretty good in reaching the amount of kids in Tacoma that are eligible three and four-year-olds for preschool, and serving the mass majority of them in Tacoma Public Schools.
Let's go. I have to...
So, in our key findings, you will see most of our recruitment and expend, expansion efforts this year, our enrollment continues to increase. Uh, we intentionally expanded, expanded our preschool by adding, um, eleven slots to, um, our E-CAP half-day program and twenty slots to a E-CAP full-day, um, program, and also, um, um, increasing thirty-two slots to our peer model program. So, we knew we were gonna increase and explain, expand, um, slots this year. Also, the goal is to make sure that we keep full the slots that we do, um, currently have. Um, looking at all of our regions, we are in, continuing to keep those slots full, which looks good. Um, we are continuing to serve most of our females and males at an equitable level, and serving our special ed students as the need arises, um, and maintaining our free and reduced lunch, um, at seventy percent, um, meeting the need of our lower-income students, the students who have the higher need for, um, preschool. Again, I already touched on the increase in the E-CAP services to Bryant Montessori, and that was intentional to, um, bring back some preschool slots to, um, the Bryant neighborhood kids that could not afford the, um, tuition-based preschool already at Bryant. Uh, so, we're continuing to grow that program. We learned a lot this year, um, having a full-day program. I'm excited about, um, moving our peer model program to Hoyt in the fall and starting our new partnership with the Children's Museum and, um, um, starting, expanding a second partnership with a second community partner at Hoyt. I think we're pros now at writing, or going through the RFP process with Marie and Steve, and so we're excited about the opportunity can, to continue that with Will, with Willard and McCarver, excuse me. Um, in our, um, early learning hubs, we will be adding child fight satellites, and so we will be able to service families with, um, um, evaluations and screenings, um, closer to their neighborhood areas. We will continue to identify and provide services for students in our bilingual preschool classrooms, um, to address our need, the needs of our ELL students. Um, and note with our ELL students, they have not been assessed, um, as ELL students with Tacoma Public Schools, because they have not entered kindergarten yet for Tacoma Public Schools assessment, so this is based on parents saying that English is not their first language. Our next steps, um, we are expanding services to three-year-olds in all of our preschool programs. Currently, Title One was the only one that did not have a program for three-year-olds, so we are expanding that to Title One. Head Start is moving their, um, acceptance of three-year-old window up earlier, um, so that they can catch those three-year-olds who are exiting out or graduating out of the early Head Start program, and they won't have a gap before they're able to attend a preschool program. We, um, have developed our partnership with Tacoma Housing Authority to support families in housing and programs and share data. That helps with our recruitment efforts, so we can meet families where they're at, um, and, and enroll them, um, in their neighborhoods, or, um, when it's, our partnership started with on their rent days, we can go and give them information about preschool, get their, um, children enrolled, so they don't have to come to one location. Uh, we are moving a Head Start program to Geiger, um, Fern Hill, and Manitow in the fall. Um, so you will see the west end expand a little bit, um, next year, as far as regional expansion. We will apply for, um, the Head Start expansion grant for, uh, full-day preschools. Um, eleven to twelve classrooms will be converted if we did get the grant. We are partnering with pediatricians and community agencies around birth-to-three early indicators and services, so we could get, um, students serviced earlier and families. And we are working with, building connections with childcare providers around joint professional development, with the whole child assessment, with goals and family engagement, and walk, um, through WA Kids, and so our next slide, um, it talks about, uh, what students get when they're in our preschools, what is quality preschool. So, students enrolled in our preschool programs will continue to receive tier support services around social-emotional development, and we use a conscious discipline approach with our students. Um, there's play-based, multi-sensory experiences in the classroom, there's opportunities to make choices, practice decisions, making, decision-making and problem-solving, so we're continuing to grow their executive function skills, and opportunities for self-directed learning, those same skills we want them to take to kindergarten, and we want them to be able to grow those skills in kindergarten, so we are working with kindergarten teachers and principals next fall to make sure that, um, they walk into developmentally appropriate kindergarten classrooms next year to support all this growth that they made in preschool. We monitor and analyze the data of kindergarten students who were enrolled in TPS preschools as compared to students who were not enrolled to determine the impact of preschool experience and kindergarten readiness. This is an important factor, because the research has shown that students who don't have access, access to preschool tend not to, um, graduate, um, or tend to, um, um, kinda enter that pipeline to prison or don't have success in school, and so, when you look at this data of students who attended our TPS preschools, and you look at, we are serving at least seventy percent of low-income students or students affected by poverty, this data's big. It looks like small, small numbers of students that are ready, seventy-nine percent of our TPS preschoolers entering, um, preschool-ready compared to seventy-three who did not attend our, uh, pre, our preschools, but that six percent, it's, is huge considering that number could have been much lower or in the negative if they didn't have preschool at all.
So, that was literacy readiness. The next slide shows you math readiness, and again, not a huge percentage. We hope to see those, the students who attended TPS preschools see that green line grow as we provide them with the necessary skills. And the final slide we have to share with you is the social-emotional readiness as measured by the WA Kids assessment, and a little more significant. measured by the WA kids' assessment and a little more significant improvement. So we thank Director Cobb for that question, and we went and drilled down and found the data, and we'll continue to report on that data for you. So that concludes our presentation this evening. And again, you have those former slides in your packet for you to refer to. Any questions that we can answer for you this evening?
I'll just start quickly, really question or comment. Do you think that these numbers will grow, that that green line will grow because when we start the three-year-olds, that there will be increased instruction with them and that will help that line grow?
Yes, I do. Because it will give our three-year-olds at least two years' experience.
The general hypothesis is without the preschools, none of these students would be, and I struggle, I know, I want to use it as a hypothesis because somehow society, we've determined that kids are not ready for kindergarten, which I struggle with on a philosophical level. They're, they're, they're where they are. But based on the standards that we have, we're seeing great successes with those kids that are able to be with us.
I just had one question about the little children, the ELL program. Do we have peer modeling in that also? Or is, is it just the students who don't have English as a first language?
So in the SOI bilingual program, all of the preschool teachers, all of the Head Start preschool teachers have been trained and used the strategies in all of their classrooms. But we do have one pilot classroom at Madison where it's just all ELL students. So on Mondays and Wednesdays, it's Spanish-speaking only. And Tuesdays and Thursday, all instruction is in English only.
Okay, and how, how is the language acquisition, is it good?
Yeah, it's really good. And they're, they use the same assessment, the teaching strategy school as WA kids as kindergarten. And, and literacy, they have outperformed the English-speaking students.
That's great. Thank you.
I got to personally observe that class one day, and I was really impressed when I helped with the audit that annually they do. And it was impressive, the kids transferring back in the language and watching it being taught.
It is a fun place to hang out.
It was fun.
It's a fun place, yes. I have all kinds of questions now. The first one, I think, is easier. You mentioned conscious discipline. Can you say more about what that is?
So conscious discipline is an approach. So the, the actual training starts out with training the teacher on how they respond to the student's behavior. So the teacher has to address their biases before they even approach the student's actions. So once the biases of the teacher, the teacher is addressed, then they can respond to the actions of the student. And then from there, how can you positively, how can you come up with a positive plan to, to respond to the actions of the student? So it still follows the guidelines of PBS, but on a preschool level. So does the student, it, it looks at why is the student behaving this way? You know, is it avoidance? Is it attention? So how should you respond to that student? They're looking at your facial expressions. They're looking at your voice. They're looking at how you respond to them, and that determines how they respond back to you, first of all. And then you determine a plan of action for that student. Does that student need to have a job? Does that student need some type of leadership in that classroom? Or does that student need some type of hug on the side? An appropriate hug, you know? Is there spec, because we are preschool, we can also offer those wraparound services for families and that tier support for the family. Is there additional mental health issues or services that are needed, you know, in that family as well? So.
There's lots of role-playing as well. They have, they have many opportunities to role-play. I was in the office at Willard one day, and a beautiful little guy was in there practicing his breathing to calm down, his breathing strategy. So lots of tools for children to be able to manage some of their various emotions.
Then on the slides where you distinguish between the students who attended the TPS preschools and did not, just to be, to clarify, so for the students who did not, we don't know, or do we know if they attended any preschool?
No.
So it's just students who did not attend our preschool program?
So we're working on changing our enrollment application to try to gather that data. This one have been of our aha processes.
Okay, and I have two more. So for students who are in the bilingual preschool programs, do you have a sense of how many of them in kindergarten, when they take the, is it still the WELPA right now? No, not WA kids, the English language.
Oh, for the English language test.
Yeah, do you have a sense of how many of them are making great enough English language acquisition gains that they're not testing into programs for English language learners?
Yeah, we haven't tracked that data, but that would be interesting data to look at.
Okay, and then my last one is kind of, I think, a harder one. You mentioned the statistics around, or the projections that the state is doing around E cap slots. And you mentioned the hundred and ten or hundred and thirty percent threshold level. I think that reduced lunch goes up to a hundred and eighty percent. So are they trying to capture students who are eligible for free lunch only? And does our number reflect both free and reduced lunch? So is there, and again, sorry, I know that's kind of a tough question, but are they, is there a number representative of their estimate of students in our area who qualify for just free lunch? Yeah. You mentioned the.
So when the state does its saturation data and determine eligible three and four-year-olds for sixteen, seventeen? So they look at, they look at the first and second grade free and reduced lunch for, rate for Tacoma, and then they do a calculation also with some type of census data, census data? I'll send it to you, I'm not sure how it works. But then they come up with this number. And so that, so then they look at how many current slots do we have in Tacoma overall, not just Tacoma Public Schools for Head Start and E cap? And then they determine a number of how many kids are not being served.
I think the census data is almost the basis for that, if I remember correctly. Showing the number of kids of that age bracket adjusted, and then they, they superimpose it, if I remember correctly, though. I looked at that, and they super, then they impose the free and reduced lunch rate for the first and second grade over the top of that. And it be, it's kind of a, it's a squishy number, to put it bluntly, because the census data isn't that great.
No.
That census data gets adjusted up each year based upon, I used to head that division, I know, when it comes, it, but when you get into, that was one of the issues that we had about when we started preschools, what, about the soft data about how many kids were really eligible. And so, you know, we get a fair idea, but basically it's just an estimate. It's not a real number.
I guess just as a follow-up, for eligibility along the lines of income, does eligibility go up to the reduced lunch threshold at a hundred and eighty percent of the poverty level, or is it lower at a hundred and thirty?
E cap is a hundred and ten, and Head Start is a hundred and thirty.
So that's lower than the reduced lunch threshold? Okay, thank you.
No question, just a comment, I appreciate the way that you package this data. Context and even down into the notes is very helpful, and I, I would be supportive of this being the way that these sorts of monitoring reports come to us.
Me too.
So thank you.
All right. Okay. Thank you very much, and I agree with Director Heinz, thank you for the data, much greater package. Board comments and reports, I'm going to start because I have two special things to do. We have been very fortunate this year to have two outstanding young women serve as our board representatives. And one of them is going off to Seattle in the fall. Yay, congratulations. And to the University of Washington, and Dr. Garcia and I do approve of that reluctantly, being cougars, but no, seriously, Flor Lee, we're very proud of you. So what I have is a certificate of appreciation that is awarded to our senior, Flor Lee Bernarte. And Flor Lee was with us for two years, and her comments have been always cogent and very helpful to backing up many, many times the things that we do here as a board. You've done a great job expressing student voice for us. Thank you. So this is awarded to Flor Lee Bernarte for your outstanding service to the Tacoma Public Schools Board of Directors for two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen school year. And it's awarded on this twenty-sixth day of May, two thousand sixteen, to you from Board President Karen Bial and Superintendent Carla Santorino. You want to come over and get it? And I think I can speak on behalf of all of us. Hey, get one more. Okay. Okay. Our second certificate of appreciation goes to our junior, Chelsea Olson, and maybe she'll join us again next year. That would be great. So this certificate, again, Chelsea, your comments have always, you know, been very helpful to us many times this year about telling us that you guys think we've done the right thing. And sometimes we don't know, and I think one of the things we're working on that you two have told, have at least told me is that we need more student voice sometimes up here. So certificate of appreciation awarded to Chelsea Olson for your outstanding service to the Tacoma Public Schools Board of Directors for two thousand fifteen, sixteen, awarded on this twenty-sixth day of May, two thousand sixteen, from my board president, Karen Bial, representing the board and Superintendent Santorino. Okay, I had the opportunity to attend with Director Wenskill a seminar on equity sponsored by WA. Superintendent Santorino was there as to where boards in schools are on the equity spectrum. And we, if we were grading ourselves on the way they grade, the one through four, T Paps, we're at about a three. And we got work to do, and we know what it is, and it did help us. But most school districts are still at one or two, still defining their vision, trying to figure out what it looks like. So I think we came away knowing that we're headed in the right direction, and we still have, you know, as Robert Frost said in his great poem, "Miles and miles to go before we sleep," but at least we've begun the journey, and we're ahead of an awful lot of other districts. Today, Superintendent Santorino signed an agreement, I had to leave early because of stadium event at Stadium, an agreement with the governor and of, I always forget, it's Kun San's province. I know Kun San is our sister city, but it's our sister state province in which we will have Korean students in our students exchange, which again, I think is so integral from the programs that we've had in the city of Tacoma, which was among the first sister, had one, some of the first sister cities, and Kun San was one of those along with Kitak Yushu, that if we build understanding between our kids and continue to build that, maybe sometime in the future, we will relate to each other as human beings and will really have that world peace that we also long have sought. Because if we know each other as people, we relate to each other much better than looking at monolithic countries. And I've seen those bridges built between us and the cities that we've had, sister-city relationships. Finally, I got to represent us today at the ninety-fourth Annual Memorial Day Assembly at Stadium High School. And I think that is the longest, probably ceremonial tribute to those who gave their lives for our country and for us in the nation among schools. And it came about in nineteen twenty-one to honor the eleven graduates of Stadium High School that were killed in World War I. And next year, maybe, I hope we can have the whole board perhaps come. It's a very moving ceremony in that wreath circle. You probably remember when you were at, you didn't, no, you went to Lincoln under, I'm sorry, that where they put wreaths on the chairs honoring each one of those who gave their lives. And then the whole ceremony is directed towards all of the people at Tacoma Public Schools, not just Stadium, who have paid the ultimate sacrifice for all of us. So that was a very moving opportunity for me today. So with that, we're busy, and we have a lot of end-of-the-year stuff to do. So get your, get your hoods and your gowns and all that stuff ready to go, because we're going to hit the ground running in about a week and a half. So as we, as we get toward the end of the, of the year, I just want to thank everybody, our staff and everyone, and particularly my colleagues on the board for the things that we've been able to do this year and work together, and I really do appreciate that. Thank you. Director Wenskill?
No, basically, you talked about the things that I did this week. And, you know, I just want to say about the Memorial Day Assembly that Commander Mandago, who's been there for twenty-three years, gave the speech at the end. It was great, and he's retiring, and he's just been wonderful. He started that program, program and has done much community service, and he's going to be honored by the city of Tacoma in a week or so, so with a leadership award.
Well deserved.
Yeah.
Thank you. Director Cobb?
I have two comments. I just think that it was great to hear from our library media specialist about the impact that the investment in new library materials is going to have on schools, because when you think about trying to nurture the whole child, one of the ways that you help ensure that students make good decisions in life is to make sure that they have access to information. So I just think it's a really powerful thing that we're investing the way that we are in the ways that we are in technology and books and just literacy in the broadest sense of that. So I just am really excited about that. And then I have one last comment about the Tide Flat Certification Program. I just really hope that it's, and like, I, you already alluded to the fact that it will be, I just hope that it's advertised to students as a premier programmatic option because I think it is. I think it has huge potentials to give students opportunities to leave high school with a skill. And having a skill is like, every summer, you go off and use that skill. If you go to two-year, four-year college, even still, you have a skill. So I just think it's a powerful thing, too. So those two things in tonight's agenda really stood out to me, and I'm glad that we're doing the work that we're doing.
Cool.
Earlier this morning, I had an opportunity along with Director Bial and Wenskill to attend the superintendent's parent advisory breakfast. Jason Lee Drumline got things going, they were fantastic, got the energy up in the room. And during the superintendent's welcome, kind of ping-ponged around the room, what's going on within your school specifically to help kids in poverty? And just tremendous work in partnership, and, and not only our staff, but community and community partners, multiple organizations, so much good work, in fact, that she ran out of time. She got the, you can't, I mean, we probably could have gone on for another hour or more as we went around that room. And just a reminder of helping remove barriers and provide those wraparound services that our kids and families need, that they're smart and capable. Sometimes they just need a little extra support certain times in their journey. So it was a, a good way to start the day. And I'm looking forward to taste of Korea tomorrow at the Star Center. Should be a, a fun event. And, and I just echo Director Bial, I think that we have a good thing going in Tacoma, and we don't know everything. And we have committed to inviting people in that can help us be better and looking for opportunities to share and learn. And I, I'm just grateful for this opportunity to serve. I think that when we think about the impact that we're having on kids and families in Tacoma, it's pretty significant. So thank you all for your contribution to this process. I'm grateful for it.
Thank you. Student board representatives, Bernarte, your final speech.
Just a quick thank you. Like, I realized a lot in the past two years, and I realize how like, open-minded you guys are, and how like, when someone comes up to the board with an issue, your guys' first response is, you know, we'll get this done, we'll make sure it'll be done. And I really admire that because, you know, there's like, a lot of struggles in school, like, with finances, because I remember we had this one board meeting where it's like, a student couldn't like, afford the certain materials for a sport, you know, and you guys want to make it happen to where they don't need to pay twenty dollars just for one thing if they want to play the sport. And I feel like that really means a lot, because especially like, as a student athlete, because there are times where like, others couldn't afford a lot of things. And I just really appreciate, appreciate that you guys are always like, just making sure a student is first, making sure like, you guys are like a man of his word, you know? You know, it might not, it might not get done like, the next day, but you guys are making sure like, it'll get done sooner. So thank you so much. I really appreciate these two years.
Thank you, sweetie. Chelsea?
Yeah, well, I was going to say, as a student in ASB, we kind of have a huge responsibility of paying for uniforms and paying for the equipment that students receive in sports. And I know recently, through Stadium and through other ASBs, that the, our budget is beginning to decline, that the amount of. to decline, that the amount of money in our ASB budgets are not, is not as much, well, yeah, they're, they're just beginning to decline. And so I know through a way that ASB cards, when you pay like thirty dollars, I was wondering if maybe increasing the amount could possibly occur, because I know all our ASBs right now are struggling to, to pay for.
Where that's something we should look at over the summer.
Yeah.
Talking with all the ASB, the five comprehensive high school ASB and see if that's unique to Stadium or if it's all of the schools experiencing that.
Yeah.
And maybe, I think I'd like to see that addressed over the summer. We come back in the fall and have Jennifer Kabiska in Student Life and Sam Reed take a look at that, because I've heard that also, and see if there's a way that we can keep that going. Okay? Thank you for bringing that up.
Yeah.
Appreciate it. Great. Superintendent Santoro, Dr. Garcia, do you have anything for the good of the U this evening?
No, thank you.
Great, thank you. Future board meetings, Thursday, June second, will be an executive session. The Board will be taking up our annual evaluation of the superintendent. The meeting of June sixteenth, again, will be an executive session, will be completing the superintendent evaluation. And Thursday, June twenty-third, will be a regular meeting of the Board at six o'clock here in the fourth-floor auditorium. We have no executive session tonight. I'm sure everyone's going to feel bad about that. So that not happening, the Chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right.
Second.
Moved in second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oh, thank you. Good board meeting. Thanks, Sam.
Two thousand.